Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Alright, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 29th zoning board adjustments meeting. Our next meeting that is scheduled is August 26th, next month, which will also be done virtually via Zoom like we are tonight. Before we get started, I just need to read a script out. It says Chair of the Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment, due to COVID-19 crisis in accordance with the Governor's new news, Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are, A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. So for this, we are utilizing Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform. The public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing either of the following phone numbers, which is 1312-626-6799, or 1929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 935-9946-2987. The meeting may also be viewed on Merrimack TV Channel 20. However, tonight we will not be streaming live on Facebook. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom. Instructions are provided in the meeting agenda posted on the Town of Merrimack's website Providing a mechanism for the public, or C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. So if anybody has a problem, please email rpriced@merrimacknh.gov. Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes are going to be taken by roll call tonight. So what we'll do is we'll start by taking a roll call attendance. So when each member states their presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So my name is Rich Coniskew. I am the Chairman of the Zoning Board and there is no one in the room with me. Pass it off to Kathy.
I'm Kathy Stroud, Vice Chair, and there is no one in the room with me.
I'm Rod Buckley, and there is nobody in the room with me.
Andrew?
Drew Duffy, and there's no one in the room with me.
Alright, thank you.
Robert Price, Planning and Zoning Administrator. I'm at the Town Office and there's no one in the room with me.
Casey Wolf, I'm also at the Town Office. I'm the Assistant Planner and there's no one in the room with me.
Alright, thank you everyone. So next I will move over to the preamble, which is Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set up the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant the request. The minimum requirements are outlined in the form provided by the Community Development Office and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The Chair will then open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussion will be between the Speaker and the Board. Please be respectful of all and in the interest of time, refrain from repeating any previous testimony. Now new documentation will be subject to consideration this evening, but reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the Chairman will close the public hearing and the Board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. So before we get started tonight, I think it's important to let everyone know that there are only four members voting tonight. Typically, the Board has a minimum of five members. What this means is that in order for a motion to pass, there must be three people in favor. If there is a split, two in favor, two against, the motion will fail. So at this time, I would like to give everyone on the call on the meeting the opportunity to state if you would like to... Robert, if you want to help me with the wording for this, if you're looking to move your opinions to the next meeting in hopes that we'll have a full Board.
Can you hear me, Greg Michael?
Yes.
Yep, got you Greg.
RCL Realty, I've spoken with my client. We wish to defer Mr. Chairman to the 26 August 2020 meeting at 7:00 PM if that's possible. Thank you.
Absolutely. So with that being said, Robert, do we need to vote on that?
Yep, make a motion to continue the case August as requested by the petitioner.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion for each of these requests?
No, just the RCL Realty submissions to the Board.
Yeah, so technically since they are noticed as individual hearings, technically, you might be able to get away with it by saying, motion to continue Agenda Item 4 through 10, all pertaining RCLT for their project at Elizabeth Drive. But it'd be cleaner to do it one by one.
Make a vote of the Board, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and read each of these in and if a member of the Board, i.e. actually before I guess before we get started, Drew, I would be having you voting in as Patrick tonight since Patrick is not here. So what I'll be looking to do is to read each of these off and then have either Rod, Drew, or Kathy, one of you make a motion to continue. So the first one is RCL Realty, a particular variant of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot, following a lot line adjustment, 42,996 square feet of lot area whereas 80,000 square feet is required. And 186.77 feet of depth whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel's located at 21 Elizabeth Drive in the R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A Lot 010, Case ZBA 2020-10.
Motion to continue.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Kathy, seconded by Rod. Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Rod, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I as well am in favor, so that will be fours. And actually, before we get too far, I should also state that Agenda Item 3 for Governor's Hill Corp was withdrawn, so we will not be hearing that item tonight. Okay, the next RCL Realty LLC petitioner, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment, with 128 feet of lot area whereas 80,000 square feet is required, 182.89 feet of depth whereas 200 feet is required, 50 feet of frontage whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel's located at 15 Elizabeth Drive in the R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A Lot 013, Case ZBA 2020-11.
I make a motion, we continue.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Rod, seconded by Kathy. Rod, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so 4-0-0, that motion will be continued or that petition will be continued. RCL Realty LLC, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with 50,174 square feet of lot area whereas 80,000 square feet is required, 155.68 feet of depth whereas 200 feet is required, 59.19 feet of frontage whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel's located at 11 Elizabeth Drive in the R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A Lot 14, Case ZBA 2020-12.
Motion.
Make a motion to continue. Oops.
So Kathy made the first motion.
I second.
Alright, so motion made by Kathy, seconded by Rod. Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Rod, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so 4-0-0, that motion continues or that petition continues. Next one, RCL Realty LLC, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with 49,524 square feet of lot area whereas 80,000 square feet is required and 25 feet of frontage whereas 200 feet is required. Parcel's located at 4 Squires Drive in the R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A Lot 15, Case ZBA 2020-13.
Make a motion, we continue.
Second.
Alright, motion bid by Rod, seconded by Kathy. Rod, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor? Drew?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, and I'm in favor. So this petition moves 4-0-0. Going down the list, RCL Realty LLC, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with 48,258 square feet of lot area whereas 100,000 square feet is required, 185 feet of depth area or of depth whereas 300 feet is required. Parcel's located at 14 Elizabeth Drive in the R1 Residential by Soils District, Tax Map 3A Lot 25, Case ZBA 2020-14.
Make a motion, we continue.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Drew. Rod, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so petition continues 4-0-0. So the next one is RCL Realty LLC, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following lot line adjustment with 61,913 square feet of lot area whereas 100,000 square feet is required and 185 feet of depth whereas 300 feet is required. Parcel's located at 18 Elizabeth Drive in the R1 Residential by Soils District, Tax Map 3A Lot 26, Case ZBA 2020-15.
Motion to continue to 8:26.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Kathy, seconded by Drew. Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
Rod, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I as well am in favor, so this will continue 4-0-0. And the last one here, RCL Realty LLC, Appeal of Administrative Decision that determined pre-existing non-conforming lots of record are required to conform to current zoning requirements upon modification of the lot following a lot line adjustment even though such adjustments would result in each lot becoming less non-conforming than presently constituted. Parcels are located at Elizabeth Drive, Charles Road, Squires Drive in the R1 Residential by Soils and R2 Residential District, Tax Map 3A, Lots 10, 13, 14, 15, 25, and 26, Case ZBA 2020-16.
I make a... Make a motion, we continue.
Sounds like Drew made the first motion.
Oh, okay. I second.
Which made by Drew, seconded by Rod. Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
Rod, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. So 4-0-0, that will be... So all of RCL Realty will be continued to the next zoning board meeting.
Please, is there just a date and time again, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely, so that will be August 26th, same time, 7 o'clock at night and it will also be done virtually via Zoom meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so the next petitioner, As Life Goes On LLC Petitioner and Laura Benson Owner, variance under Section 2.02.9B6 of the zoning ordinance to permit an assisted living group home on a lot with 1.37 acres whereas 3 acres is required. The parcel's located at 585 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial and R4 Residential Aquifer Conservation Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, Tax Map 60-1, Lot 46, Case ZBA 2020-22. And Robert or Casey, did either one of you have anything you'd like to add regarding this petition?
Not at this time, I would defer to petitioner's counsel.
Okay. Alright. And so if the petitioner is here, if you could please...
Attorney Greg Michael, on behalf of the petitioner, are you swearing people in tonight or not?
I will be, I'll be doing it at the beginning of each petition. It's really hard to see if everyone's raising their hand, so we gotta do this individually.
I understand. We're proceeding with this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so if I could have you both raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, there's two parts to it similar to what happened last month. We've got a variance, follows an administrative appeal. There's some question in our minds regarding whether the three lot minimum applies to what we are trying to do. Having said that, we would elect to proceed with the variance and hold the administrative appeal in abeyance without prejudice. I just want to make sure that the Board is comfortable with that procedure we used last month, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, and it's pretty routine, I think.
Thank you.
For us.
In any event, this is a variance under 2.02.9B6 and essentially what this is is to allow the group home, elderly facility if you will, at 585 Daniel Webster Highway, just by way of location. That particular property used to be at Hazelty's Home. Hazelty and family lived there for many, many years, those of you who are familiar with some of the history of Merrimack. And then it became Levi Lowell's Restaurant. Some of you may remember Levi Lowell's. And Mark Hazelty, the son, ran that restaurant for a number of years, very successfully. And then the current owners acquired the property and basically lived in it. It's in the C1 Commercial District. Also, the elderly housing overlay passes across this. So the use is allowed, that's not the issue. The issue comes into focus as to whether or not the three acre minimum is required for a facility of this type. If you look at the ordinance, and I'm not going to argue our administrative appeal, I'm just trying to put this in the context for the Board. We don't think that we need three acres to do this. But having said that, we're proceeding with the variance. We think this property clearly meets the five criteria for a variance. So essentially, the use is allowed. There is a split zone in the back, I'll let you know that. Mr. Hazelty had to get a variance to allow parking back there. We don't need that variance. We're able to keep our parking within the commercial portion of this particular law. But in any event, our plan is to have a 24 unit if you will, not separate units, but 24 bed facility and rehab that property. As you have seen, the property, again, has been used residentially. It could use some repair. My client's plan is to repair it, bring it back to its, quite frankly, rather grand building in its time and make it available as a, again, a facility for assisted living situations. We've got plenty of parking, we don't have an issue there. Little traffic, a facility of this type has a very small traffic volume in and out. We don't believe there's any adverse neighborhood impacts. You'll hardly know it's there. It has town sewer, town water. It's going to serve a very good purpose. As our population ages, facilities of this type are important. And we don't believe that somehow making three acres surrounding that house, that's in a sense with the planning staff. If somehow three acres surrounding this house makes a difference in terms of how this particular property is going to be used. It's in the elderly overlay district. And if you take a look at the elderly overlay district, there are very few properties, quite frankly, that meet three acre minimum at this time. We had some back in the day, but when we built the Commons in Merrimack, that took away that chunk of it. When I did the Shaw's North proposal, not all of that has been built yet, but that's still one large piece. With Shaw's North, there's very, very few, if any, larger parcels that would even conform to the three acre minimum. I only cite that because it's not something that is easily and readily available. Having said that, I'm going to let Brett take you through the five criteria. We're happy to answer any questions, but we think this is really an excellent reuse of this property. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members.
Thank you, and absolutely, Brett, if you could just stop at the end of each point so we can ask any questions that we may have.
Of course.
Alright, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Members of the Board. I would echo everything Attorney Michael said and dive right into the five points. Granting a variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Really, the purpose of lot size requirements is to prevent congestion, overcrowding, overdevelopment. And there aren't going to be any of those issues here because all of the beds are contained within the confines of the existing building. This isn't a situation where we're trying to take separate living units and cram them all into an undersized lot. There's already, the lot is of a sufficient size to accommodate what is essentially an interior conversion in terms of beds. And again, as Attorney Michael said, we can get all the parking and all the other infrastructure on the commercial portion of the land. No threat to public health, safety, or welfare. To be contrary to the public interest, the proposal would have to unduly conflict with the basic objectives of the zoning ordinance and that's just not the case here. We think this is a great proposal for the town.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the Board? Alright, you can continue, please.
Spirit of the ordinance is observed. The courts have essentially held that this is almost the same as the first prong, so for purposes of brevity, I would just incorporate by reference my previous comments into this criteria and simply add that since all the units are going to be contained within the confines of the existing building, there won't be any alteration or negative impact to the essential character of the area. The spirit of the zoning ordinance is to... If you look at this section of the zoning ordinance, they are, these proposals where all units are confined within the existing building are exempted from the density regulations of Section 3.02 and we feel that granting this variance, even though perhaps the strict letter of the ordinance requires three acres, granting this variance would serve a similar purpose and be in the similar spirit of alleviating these types of proposals from density requirements. So we believe that granting the variance would be in the spirit of the ordinance.
Okay, any questions from the Board?
No.
Alright, please continue.
Substantial justice is done. There's no public injury if the variance is granted. There's no public gain if the variance is denied. So as everyone knows on this Board, this is the balancing test and when you balance the rights here, the loss to the applicant if the variance is denied outweighs any harm to the public. If it's granted, we propose that there would be no harm. As Attorney Michael alluded to at the beginning, New Hampshire does have one of the, an aging population, one of the older populations in the country, so we think allowing this type of proposal would be a good benefit to both the applicant and the town.
And just to clarify again that there's no modification to the property necessary?
No, there may be a slight rebuild near the port cochere area, but it would be within the physical confines of what exists.
Okay.
I mean, we're not, we're not... If you took the port cochere, if you're familiar with this building, and I'm sure most of you are, we may close that port cochere in and not have cars driving through that port cochere. And we may use that to integrate that as part of the building. But that doesn't extend out. It doesn't violate any setbacks. It doesn't, it doesn't really...
So essentially, the footprint remains the same?
Yeah, I mean, the exterior, let me, let's look at the exterior boundaries of this remain the same. There's no change. It would be merely possible adjustments to the port cochere area. I want to tell you that, but it doesn't result in any change in the dynamics of this building.
Okay, absolutely, that makes sense.
I go to eat there, I park my car in the port cochere. I put the top down and I park it there, just so you know. Back in the day. Back in the day.
Any...
Other than that, there's no other expected change, if you want to use that term, no.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that my understanding was correct there then. So for the rest of the Board, any other questions? Alright, please continue.
Surrounding, the values of surrounding property values will not be diminished. Again, all the units are going to be contained within the existing footprint, so we're not looking at overcrowding or density issues. We believe that this proposal will complement the sort of mixed-use nature of the area. And as Attorney Michael indicated in his opening statements, if the variances are granted, there are, and you'll see on the plan, various landscaping and rehabilitation efforts that'll go into fixing up this property. In addition, site plan approval will be required from the planning board, so given the aesthetic improvements and the planning board's site plan review, we believe that the value of surrounding properties will not be diminished.
Okay, any questions by the Board? Alright, please continue, unnecessary hardship.
First, property has special conditions that distinguish it from other properties in the area. It is a split-zone property. It's bounded on three sides by public streets. It does have a total of five curb cuts, if you'll see on the plan, three on Maple Street and two on DW Highway. And it's also improved with two large structures essentially connected by a port cochere, as Attorney Michael indicated. Owing to these special conditions, there's no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the three acre minimum tract requirement and the application of that rule here. If the variances are granted, and you'll see this on the plan, the three curb cuts, existing curb cuts on Maple Street, which are somewhat dilapidated, will be removed in favor of one controlled, new and improved curb cut that will serve as primary access to the parking area in the rear. We think that'll be an improvement to the property. Again, just to touch on something that I mentioned before, we think granting the variance would have a similar effect to the spirit of this section of the ordinance, which is to exempt these types of proposals where all the units are in one building from density requirements. And given the size of the existing building, the layout of the parking and accessways and the size of the lot, we believe that it can adequately accommodate our proposal. And there's just simply no reason to require a three acre tract under these circumstances relating to the uniqueness of this particular proposal and this particular property.
Okay.
And finally, the proposed use is reasonable. As Attorney Michael indicated, this isn't the elderly housing overlay zone. That's consistent with the assisted living facility, senior housing use we proposed and permitted uses are per se reasonable under the HAMITRA law. So we would propose that the proposed use is reasonable.
Alright, thank you guys. Any final questions from the Board regarding the petition? Alright, then at this point in time, what I would like to do is to open this up to the public. So the way we handle this is there should be a phone number at the bottom of the screen that you can use to dial in. When it is time to speak, you'd hit *9, which would indicate to me that you're looking to speak either in favor or against this petition. So what I like to do is open the public and hear from anyone that is looking to speak in favor of this particular petition. Again, you'll dial *9 on your phone, which will indicate to me that you're looking to speak. Alright, now I would like to ask that anyone's looking to speak against this particular petition to please dial *9 to indicate that you're looking to speak against this particular petition. Alright, does not look like we have anyone from the public looking to speak in favor or against this petition, so I will now close the public portion of this hearing and open it now to the Board. But here, any discussion or a motion regarding this petition?
I have a motion.
Okay, Kathy?
I make motion that As Life Goes On...
I make motion that as life goes on, LLC petitioner Laura Benson ought to be granted variance under Section 209, oh, sorry, 2 dot, oh, 2 dot 9B6 of the zoning ordinance to permit an assisted living group home on a lot with 1.37 acres, whereas three acres is required. The parcel is located at 585 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial and R4 Residential Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay Districts, Tax Map 6D dash 1, Lot 046, Case Number ZBA 202022, with the condition that the petition gets approval from the planning board.
Second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Kathy and seconded by Drew. Kathy, are you in favor?
I am.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
Uh, Rod, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I as well am in favor. So this variance passes 400.
Thank you. Administrative appeal, I'll do the same thing I did last month and request that be continued for the next supplemental appeal of this decision. I'll do what I did with Robert a few days ago, and I'll withdraw. Is that acceptable to the board and Robert?
That is acceptable.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You as well.
Just Rich, to formalize, uh, to formalize what was just proposed, I'd like the board to make a formal motion to continue the administrative appeal to the next meeting, at which point it is likely to be withdrawn pending lack of appeals.
Absolutely. So I'll, I'll read in the petition, which was, "As life goes on, LLC petitioner and Laura Benson owner, appeal of administrative decision that determined an assisted living group home is not exempt from the three-acre minimum of lot area development, or lot area requirement of Section 2.02.9B6 of the zoning ordinance. The parcel is located at 585 Daniel Webster Highway on the C1 Limited Commercial and R4 Residential Aquifer Conservation Lily Housing Overlay Districts, Tax Map 60 dash 1, Lot 46, Case ZBA 2020 dash 23." Do I hear a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
I make a motion we continue.
Okay.
I second.
Alright, so I heard Rod make the motion, I heard Kathy second it. I know you started to second it also. Uh, so Rod, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I as well am in favor. So 400, that will be moved to the August meeting. So the last petition of the evening is Laura Philp, applicant owner, variance under Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the raising and reconstruction of a deck nine feet from the side property line, whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located at 83 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 Residential Map in Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 4B, Lot 123, Case ZBA 2020 dash 24. And Laura, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can, I just, uh...
I can't get the picture. I have it before, and then when I shut it off, I can't... I don't know why I'm not getting... I have it set up properly. I don't know why it's not coming on. I can blank it out again, but I can't get the picture back. I'm sorry, I don't know what to do.
You do, you don't, you don't have to worry about it. What I would say in this case is, if you could, just raise your right hand. And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Alright, thank you. And if you want to just go ahead and introduce yourself and what you're looking to do, and then we'll go through the five points.
Okay. I'm Laura Philp. I live at 83 Wilson Hill Road in Mermac. And the, what I'm asking is for a variance on the building of my deck. When this property was originally built back around 74, 75, the surveyor surveyed the property incorrectly. And so the boundary, the, it was supposed to be a 15-foot distance between the boundary and the edge of the house. Well, because the survey was done incorrectly, the house was built within nine feet of the actual boundary. And so it's been that way ever since the house was built. And a deck was put on the house at that, when it was built, as a way to get out the back door. Well, the deck needs to be rebuilt, and, um, so it's actually already been taken down. And then I found out it's a, so I hired Ripley Landry here in town, who built, that's all he does is build decks. And he submitted the drawing that you see, which puts the deck in the same spot that it was before, attached to the house. But it's, it's just a little bit longer because the pilings in place now, he felt, weren't quite strong enough. So to put the new pilings in, you have to move them away from where the current ones are, because he wasn't going to take the old ones out. So that's the only difference between the location of the old deck and the, the new deck would be built. Dividing the property, there's large hemlock trees, so, and I, I look on, if you was to view on the other side of those hemlock trees is my neighbor's garage doors and where he parks all his cars, his driveway, so that's my view. He really, the view from his house really wouldn't affect him one way or the other. He sees the house, but doesn't really see too much of the backyard anyway because of the trees. So I'm asking for a variance as was be, as is the condition of the, the way the house is built, so I can go ahead and build the deck.
So I do actually have a question for you. I noticed that you'd mentioned that the deck is going to be different dimensions from the deck that was torn down? How, how much larger is this deck from the one that was torn down?
Just two feet.
Okay. And that, is that two feet away from the house or two feet closer to the property line?
It's, the length is two feet longer as it extends out from the house. I'd be a little close to the property line.
But it sounds like either way, you would need a variance even if you were rebuilding it the same dimensions?
Yeah, it's nine feet from the property line. So, um, yes, either way, because, you know, the house was built in, in terms of this original, according to the original survey, which was incorrect. So, and there, so...
Alright, that, that makes complete sense. I just wanted to make sure I understood what we were looking at. So if you want to go ahead and read through each of the points, and then stop at the end, and we'll, we'll ask any questions if we have any?
Well, I must say, I didn't realize there were certain points that one had to address. I did take some notes from what the previous person did speak about, because I just wasn't aware I was, I was supposed to address them. But he, he mentioned, is it contrary to public interest? The only public affected by this is my neighbor right next door to me. And I have spoken to him about it. He hasn't cited any objections or reasons why the deck could not be built. It's not visible to anyone else, particularly besides the two of us. So I don't think it's contrary to any public interest. I don't think it affects health and safety. It'll be built according to what the regulations are for building decks. I think you talked about a conflict with the zoning ordinance, which is what this is, as the house was originally built. And I, in terms of, I think he mentioned something about the spirit of the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can, I can certainly help you. So the, uh, the, the five points are, are what you would have completed when you handed this in?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay, that's okay. So the first one is, uh...
Okay, sorry.
The variance would not be contrary to the public interest because...
Okay, gotcha. I got my paper now. The spirit, um, uh, I think it's, it's not affecting anybody particularly, except I think it affects me more than it affects anybody else, because my neighbor is a, he, he won't see it because it's blocked by the hemlock trees. Granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest. I don't see why it would be contrary. It would enhance the use of the house or the, you know, the space outside. I don't think that's contrary to public interest. It only affects the owner of the house.
Okay.
Guarantee the variance would do substantial justice. I don't know what substantial justice means.
No, no worries. So, so for the first one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. And I think you identified that
Yeah.
in, in what you'd said. So I guess what I'd like to do is ask the board, does anyone on the board have any questions regarding this point? Okay, so nobody does? So with that being said, we can move on to the spirit of the ordinance is observed because?
Uh, I think we tried to put the deck back where it was originally placed when the house was built. And there was, the boundary was improperly designated at the time. So I'm pretty much sticking with what was already existing without changing that too much.
And I, I, I think that's a good point. You're simply replacing a deck that was already non-conforming.
Yes.
So...
That I was looking for, non-conforming, thank you.
No, not a problem at all. So, and I, I think that's a, that's, that is a, a, a good reason to want to do this. Um, does anyone on the board have any questions about the spirit of the ordinance? So third one, granting variance would not be contrary to the public interest. I know you already went into detail about this, so...
Mr. Chair, if I could, uh, I'm having to notice as we're going through this, unfortunately, there is a typo in the application that the applicant filled out. And the first and third question got repeated, which is why she certainly had no idea to answer the same question twice. The third question should have been granting the variance would do substantial justice. The fourth question should have been values of surrounding properties would not be diminished. So that's actually the question that was omitted by mistake. So you skip number three for now, go on to substantial justice, and then we'll have to try to get an answer together for the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished.
Okay, so that was one that did not, okay.
Yeah. We've since fixed that on the application form, but we noticed it last month that when we changed the form over to a new form, that there was an error on it, but it's since been fixed. Unfortunately, this petitioner got the one with the error on it.
Okay, so, and with, I guess with that being said, uh, the, the next question was granting the variance would do substantial justice because, Laura, if you want to just quickly, or if you want to just explain why granting this would do substantial justice?
Well, I'm not exactly sure what substantial justice means, but I don't think that it would affect, it, it would do justice to the property, and it would do justice as a way to exit out of the back door. And it would probably hand the value of the house to a minor degree. But it would not affect the, the, my neighbor in any way. I'm, I'm not exactly sure how to respond to that terminology.
I, I, I think, I think you have actually already explained how you are doing substantial justice, because ultimately, you're simply replacing a deck, and not being able to do that would mean you have no way of exiting your house on the rear. So I, I, I think you, I think I've kind of covered that, uh, that piece. Are there any questions from the board regarding that? And Laura, per, per Robert's explanation here, it looks like there is a section of the variance that needs to be answered, but it wasn't given to you on, on the form that you received. And the question is granting the variance not diminish the values of surrounding properties because, and...
I don't think it would diminish anybody's property value.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it doesn't affect my neighbor's living situation one way or the other. It affects my living situation, but not my neighbor's. And the neighbor on the other side doesn't even see, can't, it's, the houses are far enough apart, they wouldn't even know it's there. Because mine is built so close to the border of my one neighbor, I'm sort of on top of them. But the other neighbor, I'm very far away from because of that.
Okay. And with that, does anyone on the board have any questions regarding the fourth criteria? Alright, so what we will do is we will go into the fifth criteria, which is unnecessary hardship. And so the first question is owing to the following special conditions of the property that disdangers it from other properties in the area, explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application. So with that being said, is it, if you could just explain to us, that you're, well, actually, you just read off the answer that you have in here.
Well, yeah, the property was built as, part where they called it a subdivision along Wilson Hill Road. So all the properties along this particular area are long and narrow. And, um, they have about the same amount of land, the same shape, and, there's some generalization, some... The, the, they're just all residential properties, and each house has developed their own enhancements. So some properties might have a little more land than what my, my property has, but I don't see, it's not greatly distinguishable one way or the other from other properties, I, I don't think. It's just similar to the other, other properties, except for, for perhaps the style of the house or the enhancements that people have put in over the years.
Okay. And then B, the proposed use is a reasonable one because?
Well, because it's the way to get out of the house. It's an exit from the house. And it makes the, the back space behind the house more use, usable for whoever is living in the home. And maybe to some very small degree, it would enhance the property value. But I think it's a reasonable thing to replace what needs to be replaced.
I, I think in, in your case, that's absolutely the most reasonable answer to that, is that you're ultimately looking to replace a deck.
Yes.
And so I think that, based on what you said, that that meets the unnecessary hardship criteria, so we don't need to read the next part.
Okay.
Are there, now that we've gone through the criteria, does anyone on the board have questions about any of the criteria or this petition?
No.
Okay. So Laura, what I'm going to do now is open the public portion of the hearing, which gives the public the opportunity to speak in favor or against this petition. And then afterwards, if there are comments, I will allow you to address the board afterwards. And then we will go ahead and make a motion, okay?
Okay.
Alright, thank you. So at this time, for anyone that's looking to comment on this, there should be a phone number on the screen that you can dial. For anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this particular petition, if you could please dial star nine to indicate that you're looking to speak in favor. Alright, it doesn't, I don't, I do not see any movement here. Is there anybody looking to speak against this petition? If you are, please dial star nine. I am not seeing any movement on the phones, so what I'll go ahead and do is close the public portion of this hearing. And we'll move to deliberation. So as far as the board, any questions, comments, or motions?
I believe this is a pretty clear-cut swap, the old deck that she's torn off and replacing it where a near-identical one will allow her access to come and go from her back rear door. I'd be willing to make a motion if there's no other comments.
Please.
I make a motion that we grant Laura Philp the variance, Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance, to permit the raising and reconstruction of a deck nine feet from the side property line, whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located at 83 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 Residential The parcel is located at eighty-three Wilson Hill Road in the R one residential by map in Aquifer Division Districts, tax map four B lot one two three, case number ZBA twenty twenty dash twenty-four.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, motion made by Rod, seconded by Kathy, uh, Rod, are you in favor?
Yes.
Kathy, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I as well am in favor, uh, so this variance will pass four zero zero. Now Laura, while I still have you on the call, I just want to, to let you know that, uh, there is a thirty-day window where someone can appeal this decision if they want to. So if you start to put the deck up within the next thirty days, you're doing so at your own risk, but otherwise, um, this variance passes.
Well, thank you very much, do I have to obtain some documentation about that before I build the deck?
If, I'll take care of it, Rich, um, staff will email you out tomorrow a decision letter. Uh, you then can take that and you can immediately go to the building department and get your permitting, uh, taken care of, but as Rich said, there is a thirty-day appeal period where if you do it before that, you're, you're doing it at your own risk.
I see, okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so, now that all of the petitions are out of the way, uh, do we have any discussion of, uh, any other action items or items of concern from the board? All right, uh, how about minutes? Does somebody want to make a motion?
I was not here at the last meeting, so am I, am I allowed to make a motion, or am I allowed to even vote, since I wasn't here to witness?
If you have not, uh, watched the video, uh, and you were not at the meeting, then it, it might be best to abstain, since you can't validate whether or not the minutes are accurate. But you certainly can make the motion, even if you're going to vote, even if you're going to abstain.
I make a motion, we accept Amerimack zoning board of adjustments virtual meeting draft minutes from Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty.
Okay.
Well, second.
So, I heard, uh, I heard Rod, um, make the motion, and I actually heard Drew second it first.
Okay.
Um, so Rod, uh, do you wish to, what do you, what, what is your wish?
Um, I abstained, I've glanced at it, but I haven't thoroughly read it.
Okay, um, Drew? Okay, you approve, uh, Kathy, you approve? And I approve, so that is three zero one, uh, meeting minutes are approved. You all should know what the, the last one is.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second!
Motion to adjourn made by Drew, seconded by Kathy, Drew, are you in favor?
Um, I'm good.
Uh, so, sounds like Kathy, I already know your answer, Rod?
Yes, yes.
And, uh, yes for me, so I guess that's, uh, four zero zero.
Thank you very much, thank, thank you Drew for coming in at the last second.
Thanks for the reminder, guys, sorry about that.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Uh, good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett, I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack New Hampshire Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected, follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.